Alright, good evening, everyone. If you could all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. We could now just take a moment of silence with respect to the September eleven, two thousand and one tragedy. Thank you. That's for a roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mrs. LaFois?
Here.
Mrs. Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Kous?
Here. In accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. The agenda is not updated. Would you like to do the presentation now, Tom? Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Um, you want to do Miguel or you want to do that first?
Sure.
Alright. Um, Chief, I'll ask you to come up with Miguel Aviles, who's going to be sworn in tonight as a special officer for the town of Newton. Mayor will do the swearing in.
Please repeat after me. I, Miguel Aviles.
I, Miguel Aviles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of special officer.
Of special officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Give me more to do a little bit about your background if you don't mind.
Sure. Again, my name is Miguel Aviles. I'm a retired North Police Officer. I served twenty-five years in Newark. I went through the ranks from officer to the rank captain. I served patrol detective bureau, plainclothes, and then my last five to six years was in administration. Uh, Newark Police was under a consent decree, so I was tasked along with several other officers to kind of guide the department in the police reforms that were required. Um, I've been a resident of Newton for about twenty years in November. Uh, married, I have four kids. My wife and my daughter are here. The other, my other three sons are way at different places, either college, work. I'm looking forward to work with everybody here, look, working with the team of officers here. It becomes an extended family in law enforcement. I look forward to being a part of that. Um, I look forward to serving the community. We have lived here for a long time, so I'm familiar with the town, a lot of the kids and a lot of the people here. I'm grateful to the council, to the chief, uh, Justin, Detective Torres, who had to go through a pile of paperwork for us to be here today.
Yeah, so, you know, again, thanks to Tom Russo and the town council for, uh, you know, allowing us to, you know, fill Steve Moran's position of Class Two Special. You know, like Miguel said, you know, he has a vast background in, in law enforcement and, um, you know, currently he is a, um, a security officer at a Halsted Street School, so he's familiar with our juveniles in town. So I think that's really important to make that connection, uh, within the community, so he can help with our juvenile matters, uh, you know, while he's patrolling up on Spring Street. Uh, he's also bilingual, so that'll really help us with our Spanish, uh, you know, speaking community. Uh, you know, because at times, you know, we have, uh, you know, crimes and, you know, victims that need, uh, translation and, and, you know, we're limited with our officers, so that will be an asset for us also. So it really is a good fit for our department, uh, being a town resident. It's nice to hire a town resident. He'd like to see has a lot of knowledge of the town, so we're all excited to have, uh, Miguel on board. Uh, he's a great, great person, obviously, and, uh, you know, he's definitely going to be, uh, a pleasure to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
So historically, uh, we would take a five-minute recess, uh, if the Aviles family and friends would like to take pictures or such. Yeah, you're welcome. You don't have to.
Now my blue suit, but it'll, it'll, it'll have to do.
I'll speak with him later. Alright, reconvene, um, and we will now move to a presentation from the municipal clerk's office.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So Tom asked us to give you guys a presentation on what our office does, which is quite a lot. Um, in our office, we have the municipal clerk, and we also have the registrar of vital statistics. Um, the municipal clerk issues licenses, we do fees and permits, we handle dog and cat licensing, a lot of miscellaneous things that we do. Um, I'm the election official, and I'm also secretary to the governing body. And then our registrar, uh, issues birth certificates, death certificates, marriage licenses, marriage certificates, amendments to vital statistics, and burial permits. So let me start off, um, first by saying, to paraphrase Professor William Bennett Monroe, "On the office of municipal clerk, no other office and municipal service has so many contracts. It serves the mayor, town council, town manager, and all administrative departments without exception. All of them call upon us almost daily for some service or information. Our work is not spectacular, but it demands versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience." So, um, and I'd like to introduce my staff first. Obviously, you guys know me. I'm Terry Oswin. I've been with the town since October of two thousand and two, so I'll be going on twenty-two years. Um, I became an RMC in two thousand and thirteen, the deputy town manager. I, uh, was named that in two thousand and twenty. I received my CMR, which is the Certified Municipal Registrar Certification, in two thousand and twenty-one, and I was appointed clerk in two thousand and twenty-one. And to my right is Monica Champion. Monica?
Sure. Hi, I'm Monica Champion. Good evening, everybody. I began working here at the town of Newton in March of two thousand and twenty-three in the clerk's office, doing miscellaneous tasks such as administrative and registrar. Um, I earned my CMR, my Certified Municipal Registrar, in October of two thousand and twenty-three, and I'm also working towards earning my RMC. I've taken a few classes and will continue to do so over the next couple of years. I'm also working on, uh, becoming a notary. Apparently, the rules have changed now. I now have to take a seventy-five question test, which apparently nobody else has had to do, but, um, I'm going to be working on that here in, in the near future, so happy to be here. Thank you.
And then to my left is Janine Roberts, which you're all familiar with because you've all served as mayor, so you've all worked with her with marriages.
Hi, everybody. My name is Janine Roberts. I've been with the town since July of two thousand and seven. I actually, when I first started, I started in the planning and zoning department, and then October I moved down to the municipal clerk's office, which is where I really love. I am glad I had the experience of working in both, but I really enjoy being in the municipal clerk's office. I am now the registrar here for the town of Newton, and I've had the pleasure of working just about with everybody up there, so thank you so much for that. And, um, I've been actually a registrar since October seventeenth, two thousand and seven. Um, I do multiple things, um, in the municipal clerk's office, but primarily I, I work with, we register with as far as marriages, death, um, amendments and stuff, a lot with the public and everything, so patience is a virtue with a lot of different things, and that's about it.
And lastly, in my office, um, though she doesn't actually work in my office, she is my backup, but she is my deputy. It's Catherine Alcock. She's been with the town since two thousand and fifteen. She received her RMC certification in two thousand and twenty-two, and, uh, she's Tom's right hand, and at times mine too, so. Okay, and one of the most important licenses the clerk's office issues are liquor licenses. The town currently has one club license, two plenary distribution license, which is liquor stores, eight plenary retail consumption licenses, which are mostly, um, restaurants and bars, and one plenary retail consumption with broad package privilege, which is actually shop right. Technically, they could have chairs in there and serve if they wanted to. Um, and we have two licenses which are currently inactive. The licenses are renewed every year July first, and it takes a lot to, to remind all of our licensees to submit their stuff online, get it to us, because we don't want to lose any of those licenses. Uh, periodically throughout the year, we do issue catering, limited brewery, extension of premise, social affair permits, which require review from myself and the police chief. So to date, we've done fifteen of those this year. Some of the other licenses issued through the clerk's office are food handlers for all the restaurants and any place that serves any kind of food, even we do Home Depot because they have packaged bags of chips and that kind of stuff, anything that somebody has some kind of food in, we, we issue a license to. Uh, yeah, so we also do garage sales, raffle, junkyard, fishing, we do taxi and limo drivers and owners. Um, we have the charitable bins, they're all licensed, um, filming, we do tattoos and sidewalk cafes. There's a few other ones too that we do sporadically. My staff and I are diligent in following up with the licensees, so they remain in compliance. This requires several phone calls, letters, and help from other departments and agencies, um, to get this done. Some of the licenses require review and approval from other departments, such as the police department or zoning, and we also have to use other agencies like the county health department and the fire marshal. We also do fees and permits, so in addition to the licenses, the clerks also have several different types of permits and collects fees for other departments. We issue banner and food truck and solicitors and fishing permits, along with collecting the cannabis license fees, pet adoption and boarding fees, vacant and abandoned property fees, to name a few. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, the state started requiring lead-based paint inspections for all rental units built before nineteen seventy-eight. This has been a huge undertaking for my office. We currently have over two hundred rental units registered that aren't under the DCA's guidelines, um, and we are required to keep track of their lead-based paint inspections and their insurance coverage, and we still have a lot that aren't registered that I'm constantly trying to get in, so. The other important license we issue are for our pets. Dogs are required to be licensed by state statute. However, Newton is one of the few municipalities in the county that also requires a licensing of cats. We send out approximately eight hundred renewal notices at the end of December for every year. License renewals are due by January thirty-first. My office follows up with phone calls and additional letters throughout the year. I feel pet licensing is important to the health, safety, and welfare of the public because you have to have up-to-date rabies, um, vaccinations in order to register your pet. So unfortunately, not everyone renews on time, and we have to collect a five-dollar eight-fee per month per pet. Um, we really cracked down in the past couple of years. In two thousand and twenty-one, we collected six hundred dollars in late fees. In twenty-two, we collected two thousand thirty dollars in late fees. Last year, we collected thirty-two hundred dollars in late fees. This year, so far, we're at thirteen sixty, so I'm hoping I'm seeing a downward slope and that people are registering. Ideally, I wish I never had to collect the late fee. As a service to the public, we host a free rabies clinic every year where my staff and I volunteer our time. A portion of the dog licensing fees goes toward the serum that is provided by the state for the clinic. Some of the miscellaneous things that the clerk's office also do that don't fit into the fee schedule in a category is we provide notary services to the public. This is a free service. Janine, Kat, and I are all notaries, and Monica is taking her test Friday? Yes. Uh, we process all the Oprah requests, which average about three hundred and fifty a year. Sometimes they're four hundred, sometimes they're a little less. Um, the clerk's office oversees the records destruction approval process, so anytime a department wants to, um, they have to get permission to destroy anything, so it has to go online, they put it through, and it has to come through my office first, so we approve it before they can destroy it. Um, the clerk's office is also, or the clerk is the state's contact for Daniel's Law with redactions. Um, mainly, I work with Scott Holt-Tower on that because he has more, um, online i- items for that. The clerk is the official keeper of public records. So filed in my office are all the agreements, the contracts, easements, insurance certificates, vehicle titles, and various correspondence. I have minute books going back to eighteen fifty-four. In fact, I had to pull a few today to do some research for Dave Simmons going back into the sixties. Um, we also have record books for births, deaths, and marriages, and some go back is, uh, to nineteen twenty. And we have people that came in that long ago looking for something from like nineteen twenty-something. I didn't think anybody was still alive back then. Uh, the clerk's office also sorts and distributes all the mail received daily. We also field numerous phone calls throughout the day. And as a clerk, I oversee the annual financial disclosure filing. That, uh, this entails the notification too and tracking of individuals required to file, and the keeping the roster up to date with names in terms of appointment. Appointment. You guys all should be familiar with that because you file them. And then one of the biggest things is the elections. There's so much that goes into an election regardless of whether we have a candidate up for, uh, candidate seat up for election or not. Each election setup usually starts the Friday before Election Day, when DPW, Kat and I pick up all of our election equipment from the county and put it in our little trailer and store it securely for the weekend. And then the Monday before the election, we set up each election site, ensuring we're following all the ADA requirements, and we must secure some of the equipment, um, overnight so to make sure that it's not tampered with. So we either have a closet that we have to have a lock on or something like that, um, to take care of that. On Election Day, Kat and I start our day probably around four-thirty AM, if not earlier. We have to have all the polling places open and ready for the poll workers by five AM. This requires making sure all the voting equipment is unlocked and ready to go. They have all their extension cords, chairs, whatever. Um, the vote here signs are outside, um, the flags are at every building, and, um, you know, everything's set, the lights work, heat's on, air conditioning's working. We periodically visit each polling place throughout the day and must remain at town hall. It must remain awake to be accessible if any issues arise with the buildings. The polls close at eight PM, and if we are lucky, all the poll workers have shut down the equipment and completed their day by nine PM. Not always the case, especially now that everything is computerized and our, um, poll workers are not as tech savvy as should be. Um, then Kat and I go around to ensure all the polling equipment is secured in a locked room and the buildings are closed tight. The Wednesday after election, the DPW, Kat and I have to pick up all the equipment and bring it back to the county. And then when we do have a seat up for election like this year, there's a lot more work from my office. It starts in May with preparing the council packets. This involves researching, ensuring all the state statutes listed and dates provided to the interested parties are up to date. I usually consult Eric's office on that. The packets remain available Monday after Newton Day in June. New legislation now requires the packets to be submitted on or before the seventy-fifth day before the election. It used to be the sixty-fourth, so this year they would do back August twenty-second, right in the middle of everyone's vacations. Um, once the packets are received, Kat and I must check to make sure everything's completed and required, and we go through and we check each name on every petition and verify the signature and make sure they're registered voters. This year, we had two hundred and seventy-five petitions altogether that were submitted, and Kat and I had to verify them that day so that we could give the proper notice to the candidates for the ballot draw. The ballot draw for position was done the week after the submissions, and then I have to send all the information over to the county for the November ballot and advertise it in the Herald and the Daily Record and send it to elect. Throughout the months leading up to the election, I, as the clerk, and Kat have to ensure the election law is being followed. Any questions that come up about the candidates' signage or voting, I have to investigate and address. In the past, we were lucky enough to find out the winner on election night. However, I've been told with the new mail-in voting, official results will not be made on election night, so that's, keep that in mind. And also, I am secretary to the governing body. A secretary to the governing body, the clerk, and my deputy attend any meeting of the town council. We take notes and transcribe them as minutes as an official record of the meeting. In two thousand and twenty-two, I typed over four hundred pages of minutes. And in twenty-three, it was about three hundred and sixty. So far this year, I've typed three hundred and twenty. I also have to affix my signature and the town seal on each and every ordinance, resolution, contract, and agreement that we do. Thank God for the electronic ones that we have now, the seal. The clerk is tasked with ensuring all the legal notices are published in accordance with state statute. This includes meeting notices, ordinances, professional services, contracts, and bids. And as a cost savings, my office cuts out all the notices and notarizes themselves instead of paying seven fifty a pop, um, for each one to the, the Parols. Lastly, we have the registrar of vital statistic. The registrar of vital statistic is also located in the clerk's office. This is one of our most important tasks. We take this part of our job very seriously. Janine, Monica, and I all have our CMR certification, and we continue with our CEUs that we need to keep them current. Any birth, death, or marriage that takes place in the town is recorded in our office. We have records going back to nineteen twenty. Newton has the only hospital in the county and has three funeral homes, so we are quite busy. We deal with people experiencing the joy of a new birth or applying for a marriage license, and on the flip side, the devastating loss of a loved one. My staff handles this task with grace and the utmost professionalism and confidentiality. So far this year, we printed out thirteen hundred and seventy-six birth certificates, four hundred and seventy-three death certificates, sixty-eight marriage certificates, and thirty-nine couples have applied to get married. We also process amendments to vital statistics, which happens more than you might think. Janine's our expert. We've done almost about twenty of them so far this year. Yeah. Janine also serves as a source of reference to all the other registrars in the county. We get calls all the time to provide some guidance because they don't have a hospital or as many funeral homes. So we, you know, we deal with a lot more than they do, so. As of August thirty-first, my office has collected one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar, five hundred and fifty-six, I said, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Twenty thousand of that was for dog and cats. That includes their, um, boarding fees, um, adoption fees, um, and then their licensing fees and late fees. Thirty thousand was for vital statistics. Thirty-three thousand was in fees and permits. Thirty-one thousand is in licensing, and six thousand is in miscellaneous revenue, but then that's even more because I took in a cannabis license today, so that was another five thousand. Thank you. I know I speak for my staff when I say it's a privilege to serve the public.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for, uh, our municipal clerk and registrars?
I do have a question. So are we the, the older records and stuff that we have? Um, are they on some kind of, it's all?
They're in books. They're in books in a, in a vault in the back that has a, a sprinkler system for it. But yeah, they're old, old books. We used to keep our minute books off-site, and then a couple of times when we had to research, we'd get it back and it looked like, you know, they just threw them on the back of a truck and throw them at us. So I'm like, for that matter, you know, I remember Lorraine and I talking about that. Why are we paying them? They're not securing them. We could store them in our place, so now they're safe, they're there.
In chronological order, we, we can find the stuff.
And what, like, like Dave Simmons need me to research something today, so I was able to just go in the back, grab the book, and I was going through the, the minute book from nineteen sixty-eight, where before we'd have to go call and re, you know, request those dates, and we had to have specific dates that we're looking for. So it worked out better this way.
Does the, does the county hold records before nineteen twenty?
Uh, it's a state. If you, if any of the vital records is before that, it goes to the state.
Because they're on microfiche, so they have to do their own research, so. Before nineteen twenty, you have to go to the state because it's a certain way they have to look for stuff and everything is on microfiche.
Got it.
Some of the older books, the written, handwritten.
They're hard to decipher.
It's, some of them looks like they tried to, they have script. I wish they had a print it because wow.
Yeah, an A looks like an O, yeah.
Crossouts.
Yeah.
You know, for writing over things, you're like, what time?
Yeah, it's, it's can be difficult at times.
And then what we can't see, we have to go to the state because they, it's like they have two different. So my, their signature with our book is a little different than their signature, so sometime I have to use the guidance of the state to help me, but for the most part, we can, we can figure it out.
Luckily now, all the birth certificates are done. It's called the VRI system. Um, so they're all online, and, um, same thing with our death certificates. They're, it's called EDRS. They are all online now, so, um, that, it makes it much easier. We don't have to store that anymore. But, yeah.
I mentioned this at the last council meeting, um, that I was in here at lunchtime, and, you know, Terry spoke of customer service and stuff, and it was lunchtime, so taking your statutory of how many licenses you're doing or, or copies, you know, that you're providing to the public, I would not make you do this, but like statistically, like how many of those are done during lunchtime? Because Janine was, there was just one person at the, the next, and I, you know, assume they're coming in, obviously, you know, during their lunch.
Yeah, and lots of times if, if, if it's a day Monica's not in, and it's either Janine or I, then we don't usually take a lunch. We might order in and eat in because we do have so many people come in, and lunchtime is their time to come in because they're on their, you know, their lunch break. So we try to accommodate them the best we can.
I just really observed it, like you were just so, you know, and the, and the, the public clearly appreciated because the way they were interacting and showing her baby pictures. I'm like, well, I want to see baby picture, you know?
Yes.
So you, you represent the town very, very well. We appreciate that.
She's a treasure. I mean, even like when I go to my other clerk's meetings, they all rave for Janine because, like I said, she's the registrar that's done it all. She's done the amendments, she's done the home births, she's done all that, and they don't do it. So they call her for, what do we do for this, or what do we do for that? So she's, you know, she's a treasure.
I'm lucky to have Janine as my mentor in that regard. She's very intelligent in, in that topic, so.
Yep, and we want to know how you test on Friday.
Yeah.
Be sure, because they're all like, oh, it's so easy. You don't have to do anything. I said, no. Now I have to take a test.
And, and the notary services, the banks used to do it, but they don't.
We get a lot.
So we get a lot of people coming in for notary services, you know?
So in our office, it's, it, we have to be a team because there's a lot of things that I'm not sure that I have to go to Terry because she's the municipal clerk, and there's things that she comes to me as the registrar. So we have to work as a team. That's what I love about working with our staff because we all work together. And so we all work against each other. We work well together, so it does make it a lot easier in working and doing different things in the office because you do do multiple things, like, you know, so.
You have to multitask.
Teamwork makes the dream one.
Yeah.
And then it's always a time when, you know, you always need that, okay, I need some assistance, you know, because you have somebody that, okay, that you can clearly have done a job for multiple times, but you'll get a little challenge, and then I have to go Terry. I'll have to go Monica.
Yeah.
First, first.
Yes, we tag-team each other.
Thank you. Deputy Merrill Floy has her hand raised on.
Oh, she does.
I do. Thank you. Um, thank you to the clerk's team for being there. Um, a couple of questions. I was just looking at the monthly reports that we recently received, and, um, Terry, you mentioned that year-to-date for, um, licenses and permits, uh, it's about a one, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Is that flat year-over-year, more or less? What are we seeing in terms of trends around applications and licenses and?
Well, last year was more because it was the first year that we required landlords to register, and then, um, their renewal is only a hundred dollars. The first, their initial is two hundred dollars a unit, and then their renewal is a hundred dollars. So we're a little less than we were. Yes, last year was a big year because we did the landlord registration. So, but everything else is pretty much on target.
Okay, which that leads me to my next question, because you had mentioned when you, in your presentation that there are about two hundred units listed as red, as rentals. How many do we think are out there that are not officially registered?
I, I, I can't even hesitate to get, guess. Um, when we started this process, Scott Holt-Tower had given me a list of properties that he thought might be rentals. They were either multi-units or the person had a separate, uh, address than the actual location. That was four hundred and eighty-seven letters we sent out. And, you know, we have two hundred units registered. That's not two hundred properties. That's like, you know, because some of those properties are two families, three families. So there's a lot out there. I will be hitting up budget time, maybe getting somebody to do like a census and be able to go.
Yeah, so that was kind of my next thought, right? If if based on what you've said, we might have a third of the rental properties actually register, like what are, you know, we're going to be going into year three. So, you know, what are our plans? And this is a rhetorical question. I don't expect you to have a plan right now, but we should be thinking about what our plans are to capture that, right? And in to be equitable, to be compliant, you know, there's reasons why we need to have our rental properties registered. We should probably be thinking about like how to.
I do have a little bit of plan, like it state statute says the lead certificate that you get is supposed to be given or attached to each lease. So if we do a canvas of properties and if you're not a homeowner, if you're a renter, does your lease have your lead inspection with it? If not, you know, we can crack down a little bit more. Now it's kind of hard to really tell who is a renter and who's not a renter.
State statute requires the lead base piece. So, okay, thanks. Something to something for us to think about.
Any other questions, Collins? All right. Well, thank you very much for.
Thank you for your.
Move on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four special meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the August nineteen twenty twenty-four special meeting.
I will second.
Any discussion, changes needed, comments? All right, roll call.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting.
I will make the motion to approve the August nineteen regular meeting.
I'll second.
Any comments, discussion, changing?
There was only one very, very, very minor correction that she's already did.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four executive session.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the August nineteen twenty twenty-four executive session.
I will second.
Any comments or changes needed there?
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, the approval of these minutes does not make them public.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Now move to our first public session of the meeting. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and to please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council members may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. If you like to speak, as is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person. Please step forward to the microphone.
Good evening. Jason Schlafer, one eight zero Sparta Avenue, New Jersey. I'm just here tonight to voice my support for JP Kus and Michelle Teets in the upcoming election. I've had the distinct honor of working with everybody on the dais and Deputy Mayor LaFois, who is not on the dais, to improve the town in both large and small ways. And I know this collective group has come together and compromised on their vision for the betterment of the town, and I want to see that work continue. I know both JP and Michelle are selfless servants and they give to this community unlike anyone else I know. And I want to see that continued. So I'll be voting for JP and Michelle as November.
Thank you. Would you mind spelling your last name for the record?
S C H L A F F E R.
Thank you very much. Keep it consistent. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the first public session and move on to councilor manager reports, beginning with town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echo your sentiments earlier, thoughts and prayers to the nine eleven survivors and those who perished that awful day. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. Separate note for their meet and greet that we hosted at the pool. That was a lot of fun. Nice turnout, great weather and similarly thank you to the chamber and everyone for Taste of Newton. Wonderful turnout, good food and everybody seemed to have a really nice time. So that was that was a blessing. Next up for chamber in the town, Tamara and Kimberly and everyone Fall Fest. So we're gearing up for that, the Halloween Parade. The holiday parade, the tree lighting. So, you know, a lot of activities still to come for the public to enjoy. Also working with Ralph Porter through the Arts and Heritage. They want to do an art show here. So we're trying to coordinate something with Ralph. So it'd be a neat idea to host the art show here at Town Hall. So I'm working with Ralph on that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Yeah. Today marks twenty-three years since the attacks of September eleventh, two thousand one. And we honor those lives lost and those who continue to deal with the effects today. May we never forget that day. Never forget the resolve and unity America showed in the aftermath. I just want to also congratulate our newly sworn in special officer. Wish him the best of luck and that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Diglio?
Okay, I'll start off with the Taste of Newton. I want to thank Tamara, the director of the of the chamber, along with the committee. But the work that they did, it was very successful. And I want to thank the DPW workers and the police who were there to help out at that event. I did attend the fiftieth anniversary of Liberty Towers on Tuesday. And that was a really good, it was a great event. And Tom, you did a wonderful speech. I was very impressed and I want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank the other speakers that were there. I'm not sure. I would like to congratulate also Miguel and welcome him to our family. And finally, I would like to announce that we now have the grand opening of Mio Rancho Steakhouse, which is located at one forty-four Spring Street. And I am thrilled that we finally have another restaurant on Spring Street and that that building is no longer empty.
Thank you. Councilmember Teets?
So as usual, the problem going towards the end is people have already mentioned events. But I know Tom, you know, tried to take credit for the the meet and greet at the pool. But, you know, I deliver on the weather. Same with the Taste of Newton. It was a beautiful evening. And it was. Yeah, it was been a great like couple of weeks, you know, for the town. So I appreciate all the people, as Sandy has mentioned, and Tom, you know, that have helped with all of these events and you know, together we accomplish so much. So looking forward to that continuous support going forward. Also, I attended the nine eleven memorial today at the college. It was an event coordinated with the college as well as the VFW here in town and our police department or the PBA local one thirty-eight. It was well-attended. A lot of emergency personnel were there. And one of the speakers, I'm sorry, I do not recall his name right now. But he said what he'd like to see is how everyone was on, sorry, it was moving on nine twelve. So, you know, I I remember nine eleven and I remember nine twelve and I agree, let's let's go forward like every day is September twelfth of that year. And two other good bits of news, I attended the annual Shop Right Bag for Hunger event. That was a lot of fun. We had a huge turnout this year. I think we almost had too many baggers for Shop Right. But we made the the event. It was two hours and we had a lot of fun with the customers. We had Newton police officers there, folks from the the county commissioner's office. And other, the sheriff was there. And a lot of other volunteers. So it was a lot of fun. And I encourage my fellow council members that we try to do it again next year. And it's a great participation. And the I attended this school board meeting last night. And I was fortunate to actually be able to see a presentation by the vice president, Mr. Hashway, and our school resource officer, Justin Bellis. And their presentation was on the standard response protocol for schools. Which is also a class that our own Detective Sergeant Finkel had attended and came back and shared this with the school. Including Dr. Piccarillo. And and so they're the first school in the county to adopt it. And it's a five-level system, you know, so kind of similar to like lockdown, but there's four other, you know, categories of that. And they're implementing it. It's it's also a color-coded system. So, you know, it's and it's available in different languages. So it will be, you know, the a great way to help. You know, God forbid we have a situation, but they have started it and it's I'm sure the other schools in the county will soon, you know, follow suit. So it's nice that our officers and and the police department and the school are collaborating and putting good resources to doing great work. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor LaFois?
Yes, thank you. I am sorry that I'm not there with you in person tonight, but being sick, I didn't think that you wanted me to in close proximity to you. So thanks for accommodating me virtually. I also wanted to welcome Officer Miguel Velas. As I've stated numerous times, he's joining one of the finest departments dedicated to the residents and business owners and visitors to the town of Newton. So we're happy to have his experience joining our ranks. Want to thank Terry and the team again for the clerk's presentation tonight. On August twenty-third, I attended the movie in the park, the second for the summer. We showed Barbie, the movie. There were about seventy-five people in attendance at the beginning of the movie. I want to thank Kimberly Williams for organizing it and and doing the promotion. Thanks to the Newton First Aid Squad for being present. Our GPW guys for being there, making sure that everything's clean and set up and and taking care of all that afterwards. And then want to shout out to female owned and operated food trucks that have been in the majority of our events, that's Homers Girls and Move for You. It's always a welcome addition to the amenities for movies in the park and concerts, et cetera. Then just wanted to remind everyone, I recently attended an event at the Newton Theater and it just remains such a wonderful asset to our community. It's a beautiful facility. A lot of people that are attending are from Newton, but also outside of Newton. And there's a lot of Newton pride always in the audience. I think every event that I've been to, the performers always say it's their first time to Newton. They never knew about Sussex County or Newton, New Jersey, or they're happy to be back and everybody in the audience cheers. And then I've noticed that more and more people are joining as benefactors and supporters of the theater, which is great. And they always kind of do a roll call up on the on the screens of the supporters of the facility. So just wanted to remind people. They've already put out their schedule. They have a lot of great lineup, the shows coming into the holiday season. Our next planning board meeting is September eighteenth. So JP and I will report back after that. Again, welcome back to our to school for our students and good luck to all of our fall sports teams that have kicked off their seasons already. And then I just wanted to add my my sentiments regarding today's date. So on September eleventh, two thousand and one, almost three thousand people lost their lives during the heinous terrorist attacks on the Twin Towers, Pentagon and aboard United Flight ninety-three, which crashed into a field near Shinsville, Pennsylvania. And thousands more have lost their lives since nine eleven as a result of responding to nine eleven. And as Michelle said, on September twelfth, as Americans, we collectively pledge to never forget. And I it's important for us every year to remind people about that. You know, more and more, as we get as we get farther from the date, there are more and more people in our midst that weren't born yet on that date. And I heard Assemblyman in Gannamore today say as parents and leaders, we have we have two additional jobs on this day and one is to never forget. And two is to educate people that may not remember, may not have been there, may not have have been directly impacted because we were all impacted. I think seven people from Sussex County lost their lives at the World Trade Center, World Trade Towers. And as President Bush said, one of the worst days in America's history saw some of the bravest acts in American history. And we'll always honor the heroes of nine eleven and we will never forget. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I'll echo all the sentiments that have been expressed this evening on the variety of topics discussed. The only item that I will add is that a comment observation was made that I think is is worth note. Although it's not our purview, the Main Street Route two oh six corridor going through the paving process has crosswalks, or crosswalks rather, that are very thinly marked awaiting paving and I'm sorry waving painting and striping. I don't know if there's any way if we could reach out to the DOT and see if we can put a little pressure on that since school is now in session and it's a little rough to walk out there right now. Thank you. That's all that I have.
Mayor, if I could just make one more comment. And I apologize for not mentioning it earlier, but also as Sandy mentioned, Mio Rancho opening, but also Bite Me Delights also opened. I have not visited that location yet, but I have heard wonderful things about it. And they are also located on Spring Street. So very positive comments. So stop by. It's all about food for me, Eric. I see that look.
Mine too, so.
And we have two other businesses. Curtain Cleaver should be open soon and Coffee Shop is looking on Spring Street too.
Great to see.
Yeah, very good.
All right, move on to our ordinance this evening. We have a second reading of public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, which is an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement the town code of the town of Newton by creating a new chapter of the Newton Town Code entitled Chapter two ten, privately-owned salt and other solid de-icing materials in storage to prevent stored salt and other solid de-icing materials from being exposed to stormwater. I'll now open the hearing to the public. If anyone present or online would like to speak on this matter, please indicate so. Not seeing anyone, I'll close the hearing to the public and I'll entertain a motion to entertain, I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion to act on this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two.
I will second.
Any discussion on this ordinance? All right, roll call.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. I move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement the town code of the town Newton by creating a new chapter of the Newton Town Code entitled Chapter two ninety-eight, Tree Preservation. To control tree removal and replacement in order to reduce stormwater runoff and pollutants and to promote infiltration of rainwater into the soil. I'll now open the hearing to the public. If anyone present or online would like to speak on this matter, please indicate so by either speaking into the microphone or raising your hand on this. Not seeing anyone, I will close the hearing to the public and entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion on this matter?
I think, you know, it's just important for the for the residents of town to realize that this isn't, you know, this is a state requirement. Because I did have, you know, one resident, you know, mentioned to me that they thought it was unfair. And, you know, they're putting like the the homeowners at a disadvantage and you know, I explained that it was a state requirement and to read through because there are exceptions and it's not unreasonable to make, you know, certain requests to the town. So it's all part of educating. it's all part of educating, we've talked about that a few times, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. I'm sorry, roll call, my apologies.
Okay, Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. I lost my, uh, my place there.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, which is an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter three zero seven of the Newton Town Code entitled Parking, most notably Section three zero seven dash six entitled Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets, Sections three zero seven dash seven Parking Time Limited on Streets, and Article eleven entitled Schedules Within Chapter three zero seven, most notably Section three zero seven dash forty-nine, Schedule two, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets. I'll now open the hearing to the public. Anyone willing to speak, please indicate so by stepping forward or raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the hearing to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four.
I'll make the motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four.
I will second twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four.
Any discussion on this matter? All right, roll call.
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. I move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, which is a bond ordinance providing a supplemental appropriation of one million five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for various water sewer improvements in and by the town of Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of one million five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation. I'll now open this hearing to the public, if anyone would like to speak on this matter, please step forward or raise your hand. Not seeing anyone, I'll close the hearing to the public and entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
I will make a, a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
I'll second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Oh, yeah, roll call.
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Now move to an introduction, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, an ordinance providing funding for the acquisition of fire truck for the town of Newton and appropriating ten thousand dol- ten, sorry, ten thousand five hundred dollars for such purpose. I entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
I'll make the motion to introduce ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
And I will second ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Roll call.
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes.
Mayor, if you could just allow our favorite CFO to just comment, because we're not buying a Hot Wheels version of a fire truck for ten thousand, but we're, this is in addition to previous funding that Tom just wants to cover.
So the fire truck came with a, um, a special engine, and there was a change order for it, so there was a, uh, the ordinance itself, I'm sorry. The ordinance itself didn't have enough money in it, so this is a fully funded ordinance, it's not a bond ordinance. It was funded through, um, general capital improvement, uh, the General Capital Improvement Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Um, the note here says the public hearing will be on Wednesday, October sixteenth, at seven PM, not our next meeting?
Uh, no, because.
It's your next meeting that meets the requirement for notice.
Ah, yes, because this is a Wednesday.
If you have a short meeting.
Yes.
Technical short meeting.
And then that'll be a Wednesday too, because of Columbus Day.
Right, okay, makes sense. Now, uh, move to the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, which is an ordinance providing funding for renovations to Firehouse Number One for the town of Newton and appropriating thirty-two thousand dol- thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for such purpose. Undertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
I will second the motion.
Roll call.
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes.
And Mayor, just for the record, this is, um, allowing us to procure furniture for the launch area downstairs, which is the office, the main area upstairs, and then for the lounge area, so that we're not using yoga mats for the fire, firefighters and the seniors. So we're looking at, uh, multipurpose and multifunction tables and chairs for the main room, kind of, uh, you know, two locations downstairs for computers, one additional, and then upstairs in the lounge, you know, some sort of recliners and tables, it's kind of limited space, but this should afford us the opportunity through, you know, state contracts, co-ops, and just cat doing research, um, finding the best deals on what we've pulled together with Chief Miller and the architect and the engineer, so that's, that's the exact purpose for this fund.
Thank you. And that public hearing will also be Wednesday, October sixteenth, that's it. Now move to the consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council. It will be approved by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member submits requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Sir Russo, if you would not mind a rundown, please.
Yes, sir. Resolution two two five is connection fees for Block nine oh six, Lot twelve, two two six, connection fees for Block five oh one, Lot twenty-four, two two seven's cancellation of taxes for a disabled veteran. Two two eight is the bid award for the Water Street Sidewalk Project, finally, after many months and long time pushing through Harold, uh, with his DOT work. Two two nine and two thirty are required disclosure contracts for PCI for Mars Lake Water Treatment Plant Chemical Room Rehab and the Water Treatment Plant Clearwell and High Street Cleaning, we need to do that as part of the project. And the funding that we're trying to procure, two through, two thirty-one, credit to Water Sewer. Two thirty-two is our first reimbursement for lead line replacement, twenty-seven hillside, so that process went well in terms of the application and all that, uh, that we did through the ordinance, so that's our first reimbursement. Two thirty-three is authorizes mayor and clerk to execute the agreement for the DEP to sell McKenzie Bog, two thirty-four is my annual appointment of crossing guards for council approval. Two thirty-five is performance guarantees and construction payment bond and all such for the drainage improvements at Babe Ruth Field. Two thirty-six is a contract extension for firefighter one. Two thirty-seven concurs with my appointment of Miguel for Class Two Officer, bills and vouchers, two thirty-eight, Safe and Secure Grant, two thirty-nine, and the application for the chamber for the so- special permit for October thirteenth in Lot Four.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, are there any items that the council member would like to remove for separate discussion? Right? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes, except no to resolution two two nine and two thirty.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Uh, be abstaining from checks one one five, one two, and one one four, nine four. Yes, otherwise. Now move to our second public session of the evening, same rules apply, if anyone would like to speak, feel free to stand up and speak into the microphone, if you're in person, raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to speak on Zoom. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the second public session this evening. Uh, any final counsel or manager comments? All right, I'll now entertain a motion to, uh, enter executive session under Resolution two twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-four, which is a resolution providing for a meeting not, I'm sorry, this is the wrong one, uh, where's the other? We're not doing.
Yeah, too many.
Oh, I see, it wasn't on that one. Um. But it's the same, it's just the second part, okay, so it is, yeah, a resolution providing for a meeting now open to the public in accordance with the provisions of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, item one.
Mister Mayor, before the board adopt, the council adopts, this was originally part of this resolution was a carry from the August nineteenth, uh, executive session, which we're going to ask to be continued to be carried to Monday night, September twenty-third, I do have a very brief, and I underline that phrase, uh, attorney-client privilege update before you get to the contract negotiations.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session.
I will second that motion.
Roll call.
Mister Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Kus?
Yes. Time is now twenty-ten. I'll ask all non-governing body members to.